All right, good evening. I'm going to call this work session of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 21st to order. Our work session this evening is on police response to noncriminal activities. And I need to have Counselor Hoy do the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do the roll call first. Seuss here.
Counselor Kaiser?
Present.
Counselor Anderson?
Hitto.
Counselor Nanke?
Yes.
Counselor Luin?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Lewis? And Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Thank you.
All righty, and Counselor Hoy, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, well then we will move forward into the work session. I'm going to start with City Manager Powers to kind of set the stage for us here.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, councilors. Thank you for participating in this work session on a beautiful autumn day and evening. As we've worked through and helped our neighbors and in the community with the impacts of the wildfires, COVID, we do appreciate your attention to another important issue in our, in our community, and that is policing in our police department. Tonight, Chief Moore will provide information to you, and then our expectation is for, for you, the mayor and councilors, to ask questions and have dialogue regarding policing issues. Chief Moore is going to start with an overview of the police department, the Salem Police Department, officers, number of officers, budget, training, crime statistics. This information will be helpful to the discussion of the department's response to calls for services related to our unhoused neighbors, our unhoused residents, and to those who are experiencing behavioral health crisis. The chief and I believe that it's important for you and the community to have information that's specific to the Salem Police Department and to the city of Salem within the regional and national discussions regarding policing. Tonight is not the end of the discussion about the Salem Police Department, what the department should be, the desired outcomes, what resources are needed to achieve those outcomes. Performance audit launching next month, the strategic plan, and the city's budget process provide ways to continue the consideration of changes. Chief Moore and I know that one takeaway from this discussion and from future discussions will be the importance of relationships to continue to build upon the foundation of public safety and integrity to expand and strengthen our services to all Salem residents. With that, I'd like to turn over the work session to Chief Moore. We'll walk through a presentation with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Chief?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies, of all the people in all the nights to have computer problems, that was me tonight. So I missed almost everything until the last couple of seconds. So Jerry Moore, Chief of Police, and I appreciate you all being here with us tonight so we can go through this work session. As you know from the staff report, there are a variety of items that I planned to cover this evening. Obviously, our, our goal was to discuss our response to noncriminal offenses, but I think there's a variety of things that I think you would find important as we go to that discussion. I recognize that we have a variety of people watching the meeting tonight, including three new councilors that will be seated in January. And so there's a, there's an effort on my part to educate both the new councilors in our community, but also our currently sitting councilors on some items that they may or may not be aware of regarding their police department. And so I think that's important. I will tell you that we have done our best to prepare for this work session with factual information that we want to provide to you tonight. Our current records management system and our CAD system sometimes don't track all of the items that I know are of interest to you. And I'll give you, the perfect example is we don't necessarily track incidents that involve people without a place to live or homeless. It requires a great deal of hand searching of reports. It requires us to, for instance, do a name scan of people that list their addresses transient or the UGM. But we do the best we can to try and give you probably conservative information regarding our contacts on the street. But I do want to tell you, it is not an exact science for some of those things. Other things, I think we have very factual information. I'm also going to cover tonight some of the challenges we have regarding calls for service. I'm going to speak briefly about our staffing, and I'm also going to talk briefly about our training, because I know there are always a variety of questions at community forums that I've been attending during the last three or four months about what type of training we receive. And while I won't necessarily do a deep dive into all of those issues, I will try and provide you information that helps you understand where your police department is coming from and the, and the types of training and challenges that we are faced with. So with that, Angie, if you could turn on the presentation and we'll get started. Hopefully, we'll be sharing here in just a moment. Go ahead, Angie. Well, obviously, we are one agency. I believe, as I've said many times, a, what I'd like to refer to as a full-service agency with professional police officers and civilian staff. And we try and do the best we can to provide exceptional service to our community. You'll notice there that, I did put in there that we're accredited through the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. I will tell you, there are 161 police agencies in the state of Oregon, and only 58 of them are accredited, and we're proud to have been accredited for, through Kalia, a national standard, and through Oregon for several years, and then through Oregon, I believe for the last nine years or so. So that's important to us. We are divided into three divisions. Within the police department are patrol, investigations, and support. Total general fund positions is 241, and you can see how they are broken up between those three divisions. We get asked often about the demographics of our police force. And while we have 241 personnel, includes 189 sworn and 52 civilians, you can see our breakdown of police officers and their demographics and their ability for bilingual. I will tell you that diversifying our police department has been one of my goals since I became a chief, but it is not an easy thing to do. As I've spoken with members of our minority community, and in fact, I spoke with a youth group from the Salem Kaiser School District just last week about the need to diversify our, our police department and the need for parents and community members to push people that might be interested in a law enforcement or public safety career to our organization. I will tell you, as I've had discussions with members of our community, we can't diversify our police department by ourselves. We need people that see policing as a noble and ethically sound profession and that they are interested in getting their children, their loved ones, and their friends involved in police work. And so hopefully, we, this department will continue on that enterprise to try and do that. We're often asked about our training, and I want to talk about the recruit training. Before any police officer in the Salem Police Department hits the street in a solo status, they have over 1,600 hours of training. Obviously, when we hire them, we put them through some in-house training, which is specific to the Salem Police Department. They're sent to the Police Academy for another 640 hours of training at the, at DPSST. And then when they return, in addition to the in-house training, we provide one-on-one instruction in the field with a training officer before they ever hit the street. And that covers a huge multitude of things that are important for be, for being a police officer. Once those officers are trained, and for the rest of our department, we continue to provide a variety of training for our police officers on a quarterly basis. Some of the training disciplines are, are shown there. And I'm often asked about de-escalation, and I can tell you, de-escalation is a part of many of our training opportunities because we understand the importance of that component to policing. Outside of the quarterly training, we also do annual in-service training. I will tell you, the last year, obviously, with the COVID crisis, this annual training hasn't occurred, but our in-service training is usually 40 hours of, of training during a year. And you can see many of the items that, that we train on. I think the important ones for today that everyone is aware of or would be interested in is dealing with emotionally disturbed people and procedural justice, police legitimacy, implicit bias, cultural competency. All of those are components that we have trained on at our annual training for many, many years at different times. I will tell you, DPSST, the Oregon, the, the folks that are, that certify our police officers, the annual training required after going to the Recruit Academy is eight hours of firearms, of use of force training a year, one hour of ethics. And then in a three-year period, 84 hours of other types of training, which includes three hours of mental health training over a three-year period. I will tell you, with our quarterly training, we provide about eight hours a quarter and, in addition to the 40 hours of in-service training that we provide. So we're very proud of the additional training and the amount of training that we provide to our officers. I also wanted to talk about in, engaging our community and developing relations. As you can see, there are a variety of items that, and the years that they, we began doing those, include National Night Out, our Citizens Police Academy, Halloween dress rehearsals, Coffee with a Cop, Chats with Police in the Latino community, Spanish language radio, Spanish language television, and a variety of social media opportunities, as you can see. We go on radio stations and talk about our police force, and we have a very competent and professional social media platform that we utilize to keep our community advised of what's going on in our, with our police department and the things that we believe would be important to them. Our staffing for our community, as you can see, our population there has risen since 2000, as, as you're all aware of. And we'll move the slide forward and we will show you some of our, our staffing that, and this is officers per thousand, which we talk about sometimes. We, we have added a population over the course of the years, and our officers per thousand has, as you can see, has been reduced. Just for comparison sakes, because people often ask, you can see where we fall in regards to other cities in the state of Oregon. And in 20 years, as you can see, we've added over 30,000 residents and 13 police officers. I've spoken to council many times about what would be my effort would be to add two police officers per year. And if we had been able to do that for the last 20 years, we would have 27 more police officers than we currently have. And I don't say that, I just say that as an example. I'm not here begging for a new police officer tonight, but I just want to give you some factual information about where we stand. Our calls for service, as, and as you can see, they have increased somewhat since 2010. Go ahead, Angie. You can see comparisons. We handle about 324 calls per day. Now, calls can be a variety of things. They can, they can include traffic stops. They can include attempts to locate. And you can see how we compare to some of our other cities in, in the state of Oregon. And when I talk about the types of calls, there's a wide range of things, from violent person crimes to property crimes, to a variety of other police services and activities. And those, that of course includes calls related to emotionally disturbed people, homeless individuals, and a wide variety of lesser crimes, attempt to locate, stolen vehicles, traffic stops, as I indicated, ordinance violations. So as you can see, we're, we are a busy organization, and, and those are the types of calls that we handle throughout the course of a day. Our challenges. Many of our calls, we simply cannot respond to. And these are lower-level incidents that we probably aren't able to get to because we're involved in other things or we don't have officers available in a particular district. Usually, these are the minor type of issues, but to, to a community, sometimes they aren't. They are attempt to locate, driving complaints, ordinance violations, for instance, people drinking in public or some other ordinance violation, traffic assists, unverified alarms, assists to other agencies for a variety of things. And those are calls that we would like to get to, but because of a variety of issues, which I will talk about, we're sometimes unable to do that. Many of, many of our property crime incidents, as you can see, and we'll talk about this a little later, are sent to detectives but are never assigned. And that can be for a variety of reasons, which I will, I will touch on when I get to investigations. And then about 20% of our calls are self-initiated. And I will tell you that that is not the level that I would like to see our ability to do that. And sometimes we talk about calls that are self-initiated, but we also call, talk about it as unobligated patrol time. And that is the time when we're able to do, unobligated time is when we're not on a call, when we're not dispatched to something, when we're not busy. And it's our ability to do preventive patrol through neighborhoods where we are able to do many of the things that people have suggested over the last several months especially, but over our course of time, which allow us perhaps to get into the neighborhoods, talk to community members, walk in some of the neighborhoods and talk with people or be out on bicycle where it's easier to make us be able to stop and talk to people so we can better learn what's happening in our neighborhoods and what the concerns are of our community. As you can see, industry standards and best practice would be to have much more unobligated time than we have. IACP would tell you that it would be nice to have, I think, up to 40% of unobligated time. We are well below that, and it would be, it would be great if we could improve that because I believe our community and our, and our community members would relish the chance to have more opportunities to talk to our police officers and build relationships. And as I indicated, our ability to do preventive patrol when we're tied up on calls for service are reduced greatly. Our response time is, has gone down, which is good to see in the last couple of years. Eight minutes seems probably like an eternity. It does to me. I will tell you, there's a variety of reasons why that might happen. Some of our calls, I will guarantee you, it doesn't take us eight minutes to get to priority one and two calls, which by the way, are calls which are in progress. Some of those could be assaults, domestics, burglaries in progress. And what we do is we try and, if we're busy, we try and free up officers to respond to those. Sometimes calls for service, such as a domestic or a burglary in progress, may require the response of more than one officer. So that factors into our response time. And, and some of the other calls that are in progress, for instance, a hit and run or a stolen vehicle, probably while we would like to be able to respond as quickly as possible, don't require the same exigency as some of the more serious persons crimes. So that factors into that as well. As you can see, our response has to do with the number of incoming calls for service, the number of officers available, the officer, number of officers that are needed for a specific situation. That, that certainly all factors in. Our investigative challenges, as you can see, in our persons crime unit, we have nine detectives, and in our property crimes unit, we have eight. The types of calls that they're assigned, we have four officers assigned to investigate assaults, attempted murders, homicides, robberies. We have five investigators to deal with sex crimes, excuse me, child abuse, criminal mistreatment, rape, and other sex crimes. Each detective in those sections carries a pretty steady call, caseload, as you can see. Some of those cases take lengthy time to adequately investigate them because of the intricacies of them, and many of those cases require more than one detective. Property crime, similar, that's arsons, auto thefts, burglaries, identity theft, thefts, arsons. And as you can see, they, they too carry a, quite a caseload. And like I discussed earlier, about 2,500 property crime cases are not assigned to a detective, and that can be for a variety of reasons. Sometimes there's simply no evidence. Some, we, we triage like everyone does in whatever profession they are, and we try and assign where we think we can get the biggest bang for the buck. And, and that is why some of those cases aren't assigned. You can, as you can imagine, everyone that is victimized in the city would like to have their case assigned to someone for follow-up, but quite frankly, sometimes that is impossible to do. I'll get to probably what everybody wanted to talk about today, but I wanted to set the stage, both in training and with some of the limitations on our staffing so that you understand exactly where we are. And that is, and what I wanted to talk about today is what we sometimes consider noncriminal cases that our, that our department responds to. Obviously, individuals in emotional crisis and homeless individuals in camps. As you're probably aware, we have a behavioral health unit, which we're very proud of. It consists of a sergeant and three officers. Each of the officer position is grant-funded either through Marion County or Polk County. The officers are teamed with a qualified mental health professionals. And as I indicated, two of those officers cover Marion County, one covers Polk County. And they are teamed up with, and we, in addition to our officers, the behavioral health unit of the three counties encompasses deputies from both Marion and Polk County as well, and qualified mental health professionals from... Their goals are very simple. Together, we want to find positive alternatives to arrest. As you are all aware, it doesn't do us any good really to put someone that has, is in emotional distress and somewhat disabled because of that in a jail. But I will tell you, some of our EDP calls are unpredictable. They include aggressive actions, weapons, people under the influence. So many times, there is certainly a need for a response by a police officer. The teams provide crisis stabilization, research, resources, services, and case follow-up, which our patrol officers certainly are unable to provide to individuals. And our department responds to approximately 14 EDP calls per day, which is about, if I remember, 5,000 calls annually handled by the Salem Police Department, simply involving emotionally disturbed people. Our problem-oriented policing team and our downtown team, as well as our patrol officers, are the ones that most often respond to issues involving homeless individuals in camps or chronic crime and nuisance properties. As you can see, there's two sergeants and seven officers amongst those two units. The downtown team obviously works in the downtown core, riverfront, Minno Brown Parks, and our transit mall, and of course, they will spread out to other parts of the town when they need to. The problem-oriented policing team is more involved with some of the areas, such as Cascade Gateway Park and other places where we may need to try and assist people that have no place to live and are in some sort of a crisis. To date in 2020, we believe we responded to about 3,000 calls for service related to people that are in crisis or homeless. And while that number, that's a difficult number to come to, as I indicated at the very beginning of my talk, we think it's probably somewhat conservative because many times during the day, that's what many of our officers are involved in. We talked last year, the city for the first time tried to put an estimated fiscal impact on the homeless activity. And I will tell you, it was, in some respects, I won't call it a swag because we tried to determine the amount of time our people were involved dealing with homelessness issues. But you can see, it took a great deal of time and resources from not only all of the city, but certainly from the police department. Probably 75% of the time in the downtown area where our patrol division, our downtown team was involved. Obviously, our patrol division and our property, our problem-oriented policing team was involved in that. The support division through our record section dealt with a lot of the reports regarding homeless individuals. And of course, our 911 center dealt with a variety of calls and quite a high number of them, as you can see, based on the estimates that we have. When we talk about a challenge, I know you're all aware, is the lack of services for the chronically homeless individuals. And as you can see from many newspaper articles, and I know you are all well-educated on the fact and that this community, as well as many others, is concerned about our ability to provide service to the homeless and those emotionally disturbed people that reside in our community. As you know, we made efforts to obtain a sobering center during the last year, which as a region, we were unsuccessful doing. And of course, we would love to have a model such as Kahoots in Eugene and their mobile crisis intervention resources because we do believe obviously it would be a great assistance to our officers in this community. I have all of my division commanders here today. If you have specific questions regarding any of the things I have talked to you about. I had talked about where some of the issues occur, and I know they are citywide. And Angie, if you're able to put up, are you able to go the map? I just want to give you an indication of where our crimes occur. And it will be no surprise to you when you see the map that they occur everywhere throughout our community. And counselors, all of your wards, and I'll try and bring this up here for you if we can. And if we can't, we won't look at it, so. This is more, I think, just for your interest. And I'd like to thank the IT department for helping us with this. This is just a sample of 2019, maybe some of our more serious crimes, if you will. You can see the thefts, auto thefts, burglaries, sex offenses, robberies. And I will tell you that, to no surprise of any of you as counselors that are in the know about what happens in their wards and in our community, I just wanted to give you an indication. This, of course, doesn't encompass all of our crimes and the things we've responded to, but I do want to let you know that we are a busy city. And while we believe this is a safe community where people are comfortable living, there is crime that occurs here. And we do our best to respond to those issues and do what we can to keep our community safe and have that feeling of safety. We'll show you a heat map, which kind of just shows some of the areas where these things commonly occur. And it will be no surprise to you, they happen mostly in our, in our, many of our business areas where some of our larger retail stores are, and they happen around some of our parks and some of the stores that surround, right now, Wallace Marine Park, of course, and Cascade Gateway Park. But that just gives you an indication. I think all of our main arterials where businesses are associated, especially some of our larger retail stores where we have a variety of shoplifts and such, is where most of our crimes center. Thank you, Angie. So I will, I'll close with that. And I have a staff here that will hopefully be able to answer any questions that you might have. And thank you for your time.
Any questions for the manager, the chief, Counselor Nurdike?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Moore, for that presentation. That was very enlightening, and I hope that a lot of folks around our community get to see it. So I do have a few questions for you. And first of all, I understand, as you indicated towards the beginning of your program, that you don't necessarily track how many calls involve the unsheltered over the last 18 months. But to the extent you could, what I would be curious to know is what are the outcomes of these calls? For example, and this may be something that you and your staff and your deputy chiefs, you might, may or may not have this information at your fingertips, but I would love to hear more. Of these calls within the last year or so, how many unsheltered folks were transported to additional medical care, such as being taken to Salem Health? How many were referred to or connected with a social service, such as Arches? How many were de-escalated and resolved on-site? And how many resulted in arrest? And I'm happy to, you know, repeat that or send a follow-up to you. But in terms of my interest for deciding whether a Kahoots-type model makes sense for us, it would be helpful for me to know how our unsheltered persons essentially address currently by our law enforcement using those parameters that I've given.
Well, I'm going to let Deputy Chief Miller maybe respond. I'm going to tell you, we won't have the numbers that you're asking for. So maybe a follow-up email where you could give me those again, and I will be more than happy to see what we can come up with. My guess is many of them, you talked about de-escalation. I think that's probably the majority of the calls we go on. And I think a lot of them probably result in no action at all. But I'll let Deputy Chief Miller respond to that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Skip Miller, please. Very glad that the chief pointed that one to me because that's really an easy question. It's actually, as you mentioned, Counselor, it's extremely complicated. As far as how many people get transported, if it isn't somebody who's going to be, we're not giving them a courtesy transport someplace, the fire department would have to actually work on some of those numbers because they're the ones that provide ambulance services. As far as, I guess to kind of go back, the chief mentioned that we do not generally track homelessness. And the reason we do not is part of the complications of what you're asking is it's not a crime to be homeless. It's a socioeconomic status, and so we try not to track those things. So the ones that we actually do track, the ones that we have numbers for, are the ones that we've taken action with. The ones where we respond and we actually do not take any action except for maybe de-escalate. A lot of those don't even result in a report being generated. So we could actually put some work together and try to come up with the numbers that we gave you, like 30,000 per year on what those outcomes were for us. But it is, as the chief mentioned to begin with, it's a very conservative estimate on how many people we come into contact with.
I do believe, Counselor, while perhaps we didn't track those, I think we're going to try and make a better effort in the future to try and provide, be able to provide better information about what exactly is the impact on a community in numbers regarding homeless individuals. Some of our homeless individuals, I will guarantee you, we contact over and over and over again. And you asked about the Kahoots model. And it would be, I think it would be wonderful if, first of all, we had people that were willing and wanting services to be provided for them, which is the very first step. And then, of course, having the resources available to do that. And I think that's, I think when you look at the Kahoots model and the resources that they have associated with that, I think it would make a huge difference.
Thank you. And you know, as a follow-up, I don't know if we have anyone from the fire department present tonight because this is a work session on policing. But I would have the same question for Chief Niblock and his team in terms of, you know, how many calls do our emergency medical personnel respond to as well? The same thing, how many are transported to medical care? And now, Chief, I'll be sure to send you a follow-up email. How many transported medical care? How many referred to or connected with services? How many de-escalated and resolved on-site? And how many resulted in arrest? So yeah, I would appreciate getting information ideally from the last 18 months because there's been so much change in our unsheltered community within the last 18 months in terms of where they've been, where they have been living, where they've been allowed to live, given a lot of changes in terms of the city's positioning on where individuals are allowed to live outdoors. It's changed a lot within the last couple of years. So I would, I'll look forward to more data. Mayor, I have one other question, if that's all right. I'm sure other counselors. But I have one other question. I think it's easier to respond to, hopefully.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Thank you. This one is not a multi-part question. You know, early in the materials that are actually provided in our agenda item, it shows the fiscal year budget from 2011 through the projected budget for the year 2021. And over that timeframe, in 2011, the total number of police employees, including police officers, was 234. And the number of sworn officers was 190. Again, this is according to our materials in our agenda for this evening. If you look all the way down to the fiscal year 2021, it shows total number of police employees has increased, but not by a lot. It's only gone up from 234 employees to 241. And the number of sworn officers is the same, 190 in 2011 and 190 in 2021. However, while the number of employees has only creeped up a little bit, I'm seeing a big change in the general fund police budget. It was at 29 million in 2011, and it's at almost, almost 49 million in 2021, clocking in at 48,893 and 510. So my question would be, I'm not seeing a huge increase in personnel, but I am seeing a large increase in your budget. Can you explain briefly why that is?
Well, it'd be difficult for me, but I imagine Josh can handle that question. He might be in a better situation to do it. I would hazard the guess, and he can confirm for me, that it's personnel costs because I think probably the biggest part of our budget is personnel. So I don't know if Josh is available to answer that question.
I am, and you're exactly right. There's a lot of escalating personnel costs. PERS is one of them, health benefits, as well as just normal wage increases. And we don't have that detail for you tonight, but we can get something out to you to show the breakdown of what's increased as far as the cost for personnel.
I understand. Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
And Counselor, before you leave, I think 18 months is probably a good amount of time. But I will tell you, COVID has certainly skewed what might normally happen simply because it, sometimes, I think transports by the fire department would certainly be similar as well. But some of the ways we would probably handle or could conceivably handle a situation or transport or an admittance to social services is also impacted because of COVID and the ability to take people where perhaps they should be.
That seems fair. Thank you for pointing that out. COVID has turned a lot of things upside down. There's no question about that.
Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief and Deputy Chiefs, I have three questions. And also, I'm glad Josh is here because probably one of them is really for him. But one thing, I wanted to start with a clarification. You mentioned about the behavioral health unit, that it was grant-funded by the county. And that's not my understanding. Can you clarify? Maybe I misheard you, or maybe I didn't understand exactly what you meant.
I think you're right, Counselor. I think it's state. I think it's by the state and given to the counties, is my understanding. But I'll let Deputy Chief Miller, who deals with that.
Counselor, that is correct. It's state funds that goes to the counties. There's, again, the one position we have in Polk County, which is grant-funded. And then the other two that we have over here in Marion County, which are also grant-funded. It's given to the counties to do exactly what it's supposed to be doing. There's actually, in Marion County, we have two officers. Woodburn has an officer and Marion County has one deputy.
Deputy Chief Miller, your audio is extremely difficult to understand. We can't hear you at all.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with him.
And to clarify, I'm asking about the whole program, but specifically also the police officers. I think we pay for those, don't we?
No.
No. Can you hear me better?
Yes.
I'm trying to hold it up close.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a nice look, I know. So it is grant-funded. The city does not pay for the three positions.
Thank you.
Just one second. What is the funding source at the state level? What program it comes through?
I don't know. It's actually designed to help municipal agencies and counties with the mental health crisis that the state...
Did you get me the detail on that, or I'd like to see exactly.
I think it's state mental health money, but I'm not positive.
Let's get a look at that.
My other two follow-up questions, and this is probably for Deputy Chief Miller. Can you, I think it would be helpful for council to understand, when you go to a call, let's say you've got a person experiencing a mental health crisis, whether it's at somebody's home, whether it's a homeless person, wherever, it doesn't matter. What are your options? What are your officers' options? What choices do they have when they go out to that call? You know, I think it would be helpful for you to paint a picture for council to understand, like, what are your choices that you can make? What are the possible outcomes to that call? Also, I'm hoping that you can, I've been asking for specific information about impact of the state hospital being here, but so far I haven't gotten that. So I'm hoping that you can maybe give us some anecdotal information on what portion of those folks in those kinds of calls do you think are somehow associated with release from the state hospital? Thank you.
Very good. Did you have another question then, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I was hoping that was a question there.
Oh, you want an answer? I didn't know you were doing the special tonight.
I was hoping for an answer. I was hoping for an answer.
Yep, you got it.
Maybe Tom was going to answer. Counselor Anderson, are you going to answer Chris's question?
Yeah, yeah. Skip, I think he wanted you to talk about the, uh, options available, uh, when you come across someone in a behavioral crisis. Is that great?
All right, I'll try holding this up here. So when we arrive to one of these calls, in general, it takes three officers to respond to any of these, um, mental hypos, mental health crisis calls that we respond to. With our behavioral health unit, we can cut it down to basically one to one and a half officers. And the reason that we can do that and reduce it and become more efficient is because it allows us to have not only an officer who has more training in it and crisis intervention, but also have a trained mental health professional that's there to assist. So I guess to say it simplistically or as simplistically as I can, we actually do not have a lot of options unless they're an immediate threat to themselves or to somebody else, in which place we can actually place them into a police officer custody and transport them to a hospital for evaluation. We can also ask them if they want to be transported and many people actually do want to go have assistance. And so we will provide a courtesy transport to, um, the crisis psychiatric center. Or, um, in many things, what we try to do is get them plugged into with the, the teams that we have. It's to get them plugged in and identified so we can continue to work at a later date on crisis intervention, kind of a more planned approach to keep those people from having relapses, to get them plugged back into their mental health providers and to make sure that they're taking their medication to try to get them back to calls, um, to, to get into a more normal position where they're able to perform better. Counselor, did I answer the first part of your question?
It, it did. It, it did. But I was hoping you could also, um, do you have any other options? I mean, I think sometimes people think that we have other resources, nonprofits that you can, uh, engage with, those types of things, something other than the hospital or jail. Do you have any, I think it'd be helpful just, and if the answer is no, that's, that's, that's okay too. Just, I think it's good for people to hear that.
If it, if it's somebody that's truly just experiencing emotional disturbance issues, there really is not many options outside of that. That, that's really it. To take them to some other place, Arches are great partners with us as an example. There, it's just going to create more problems for them if we take, take them and drop them off there. It's the same thing with any of our other community outreach programs. They're, they're good partners. But if we already got called there and there's not many other things that we can do for them, taking them to another place is just going to continue that call and continue us to have them respond.
You have, uh, do you use Marion County mental health at all in, in, in these times? A place that you turn to?
We deal with Marion County mental health in our, our crisis outreach center.
No, I'm talking about where you, you're on a call and you, what are your options? Is Marion County mental health one of your options? Kind of assistant in dealing with.
I think if I understand your call, Mayor, um, we, we could transport people to psychiatric crisis.
Chief here on mute.
Yeah.
So if, so our, our, our PCC, which is the psychiatric crisis center, that is actually part of Marion County Mental Health and that's, that's who we use the most. Uh, the only other times we really use them is if we actually know the person or they tell us that they already have, um, a doctor that they're seeing or a therapist, and then we're, we're able to actually hook them up with.
And that's a secure psychiatric unit for people in crisis?
PCC is a secure center for people in crisis, yes.
Does the hospital have a similar unit?
So if we were going to take, Mayor, if we were to take somebody into a police officer custody, we would take them to the hospital and then they would stay there because it is more secure. They have rooms that are made to hold. If it is going to be someone who is not a complete threat to themselves or others immediately, then we would take them to PCC where they would get assistance there. And then if they, if, uh, after being evaluated, they would decide that they were going to go, um, into a longer term stay.
Are there any other institutional destinations you can use?
No, there's, they're actually, they're not.
Ray, are you done?
I, I was hoping for, uh, for Deputy Chief Miller to address the last part of my question, which is anecdotally, in your experience, how, how big an impact is the Salem, the state hospital, uh, on the number of individuals you're, you're dealing with that are in that situation?
I think it is, it's a very. I guess it's a couple of phase questions. You know, in the history of the state, anyone that had major mental health issues got transported up here. There are more, more regional areas now where they, they can be, but it is affected Salem much like how, um, the correctional institutions that we have has affected Salem in our, in our response to, to crimes. I think that, well, anecdotally, I think that when the state and the federal government decided to actually stop some of the funding, and I know what they were trying to do, and I think it was a very good intent. They were trying to get rid of, of places where probably some bad things happened and trying to get, trying to get people that have mental health issues into smaller, um, care facilities. And that actually would be great. I think anyone that has seen any of these other things would think that that is a good outcome. But at some point along the line, the funding stops. I think that, that is actually where some of the problems began because the people that used to be, um, in a place where they, they were cared for 24/7, where they had food, they had shelter, they had, um, an ability to stay clean and somebody helping them make those decisions. When those things went away, there's a lot of people in our community, and it's not just Salem, but clearly Salem being the state capital and people thinking we have all these other resources, and quite frankly, we really just do not have. Um, when those things started occurring, um, it's created a, a burden on our community. And quite frankly, um, I guess anecdotally, which is probably not what you're asking, um, it, it's, it's actually, it's, it's, it's a shame. It's, it's sad for us to have to deal with people, um, over and over, who really just do not have the ability to make decisions that are better for them.
Thank you. Thank you, Skip. Okay, Counselor, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, uh, continue the line of questioning that Counselor Nordike started. And chief and city manager, we met last week and we had some of these sort of discussions. And I'm really interested if there's any way you can break down the calls for service more than you have. Just by my back of the envelope, it seems to me that you were saying around eight thousand calls are for homeless or the, the, uh, uh, EDP calls. And it looks like that's eight thousand out of a hundred and eighteen thousand last year, which by my rough calculations, again, is seven percent or seven and a half percent. That seems slow to me and I, and I, 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 I don't know how it can be broken down more, but I think that probably you could find a way. The, um, second thing, again, as we discussed, uh, when we met last week and following up on Counselor Nordike, I'm very interested in of the calls that come in that originate originally are non-criminal nature. There's a guy drunk on the street. There's somebody who's having some sort of psyche breakdown, psychotic breakdown downtown or, uh, uh, you know, some of those sort of things, or maybe even some domestic disturbances. I, I'm very interested in of those kind of calls that start out with non-criminal, uh, um, non-criminal reporting, uh, escalate to criminal. And it's kind of a little bit on the theory, if you have a hammer, everything's a nail. And, um, you know, I'm looking at the guy, I think his name was, um, uh, Richard Brooks, the guy who was drunk and fell asleep in Wendy's and cops came as opposed to, um, uh, uh, community resource officers or behavioral health team or something.
This was not in Salem. Say where this occurred.
I understand it, Mr., Mr. Mayor. I do understand it, but I'm saying that that.
Where did it occur?
Yeah, that, pardon me?
Where did this occur?
It occurred in Missouri. I agree.
No, no, that's important. I just want to understand that.
Oh, no, I agree. It did not happen in Salem, nowhere near Salem.
Because we have Wendy's in Salem. It didn't happen at Wendy's in Salem.
No Wendy's.
Okay.
Happened no place in Salem.
Let's be real clear when we're talking out of town.
Mayor, all I'm saying is that that is an example of how sometimes things escalate that are non-criminal that, that end up being criminal. So I'm interested in that. Um, and another thing that very much interests me is the amount of time. Uh, and, uh, uh, you know, and I don't know how you can codify this, chief, but I would be very curious as to, uh, what percentage of a police officer's time uh, on the streets and any one of the various teams we have is spent in dealing with these kind of issues as opposed to crime prevention type issues or, uh, crime reporting and, and, and crime investigation type issues? That's, that's something that, um, I find, um, um, something I'd like to look at and see because what happens if we're spending fifteen percent of every officer's time on, on these sort of issues as opposed to crime prevention or crime investigation? Um, I don't know if you can give me those answers now. You probably can't, but I'd like some sort of response. And I have a couple of other questions, Mr. Mayor, but I'll let other counselors ask them.
Go ahead. Go ahead, counselor.
Okay, um, I'd really, um, like some more discussion of cahoots. The, the city manager and I discussed this and, and, um, you know, what I understand is from everybody, including the reports tonight, is that Salem is Salem. It's not Eugene. It's not Portland. It's not someplace else. We don't want to talk about what necessarily what other cities do is maybe that doesn't work for Salem. But in all these reports we've got that, we're comparing ourselves to other cities in the state, in the state of Oregon. And, uh, so it just seems to me that that is something that I would, um, really like to pursue, um, in, um, some, uh, form to continue. The, um, other thing, um, I, I guess this is more of a, an anecdotal thing too. I'm just curious, I'm looking at, I don't know who would know this, maybe, uh, Deputy Chief Miller. Your average cop on the street, do they like these kind of encounters? Or would they rather have somebody else doing them and they'd rather be doing serving and protecting as opposing to deal with individuals with problems that may or may not be related to crime? And my final, uh, uh, this is more a little comment. Um, and this relates to, you know, the things that have been going on in our, um, community and state and nation. I understand and I agree completely with what Chief Moore said about our goals and we want to be diverse, et cetera. But we've got one black officer, uh, um, and eighteen women out of two hundred, almost two hundred officers. And even looking at the percentage of African Americans in the state and our community, which is admittedly lower than the national average. That's, um, that's just a very unfortunate circumstance to me. And I would urge you to do everything you can, and I'm sure you have been doing it, but even redouble your efforts to get, uh, uh, more, uh, people of color and, and non-white males on our police force.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and in that same light, you know, following up on Counselor Anderson's point, the, uh, the number of Hispanic officers don't represent our makeup either. And I know that the Salem police department, in my entirety, um, of the time I've spent on council has, has been trying to boost those numbers, but if people don't apply, um, it, it's really hard to, uh, to build that diversity inside of that department. And I know the chief suffers with that a lot. Uh, but my actual question's here, um, and, and we just talked about Eugene to some extent and knowing that their, uh, property tax is significantly higher than ours on the permanent rate. When I looked, saw your, uh, slide earlier in the presentation, their number of officers per thousand are not that much greater than ours. So is that patrol officers, full staffing? Can, can someone answer, um, how Eugene is staffed versus how Portland is staffed? Is, is it full staffing or is it patrol officers?
Were you talking, uh, Portland and Salem? Is that, or, or Eugene and Salem, I mean?
Yeah.
Well, uh, I happened to talk to a Eugene officer today. They, they now have, uh, two hundred and ten officers, uh, compared to our one hundred and eighty-nine. Uh, part of that was, um, due to a, um, tax of some sort that, uh, was passed over the last couple of years. I don't, I couldn't give you the exact number of patrol officers they have. They're probably very similar to us. They split their, uh, organization, uh, as need, uh, as needs arise. And they have detectives and, uh, special teams similar to what we have, but I don't know the exact numbers, counselor.
Sure. And I was just curious, is staffing versus officers per thousand and how, how you calculate that? Because they, they do have a much larger permanent tax rate and, and we've done comparisons, um, throughout the years as well. So that'd be interesting to see. Two other quick questions. Eight-point-three-minute average response time for a priority one and two calls. Do we have comparatives for other jurisdictions?
Uh, we tried to, uh, we talked about doing that and we were, um, there's some professional publications say don't, uh, compare certain things from one city to the next because the way they track them or their dispatch centers or whatever it might be. I could try and get that, but I've been told it's difficult, but I will, I will see what other, I will see what other cities have.
Okay. And, and then my final question is the, uh, the problem-oriented policing team. We had between downtown homeless and nuisance properties, two sergeants, seven officers. Do the sergeants actually go out and respond as well? So is it really nine people out in the field?
Counselor, both of the sergeants, because of the makeup of our teams, or pretty much all of our sergeants in the department are actually active working sergeants. But those two sergeants specifically are very much, um, teaming up with their folks and, and working, um, all of the same stuff that our officers are working.
Excellent. And I just thought that might be a question that, uh, community members might have, so I wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Questions?
I have a, a question.
Go ahead, counselor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a follow-up, um, question to the comment that was made about, um, not having, um, diversity within the applicants. So what is a police department doing to, um, encourage, um, to encourage or increase the number of applicants from diverse communities? It's the first question. And I'll have a second one, but we'll go with that one first.
Who's going to answer?
I will. I couldn't, couldn't get my mouse to work. So Deputy Chief Steve Belshaw. So we, um, have been, um, trying various recruiting efforts for a number of years. So we have, uh, we have a recruiting team. We go to, uh, local job fairs. We have advertised, um, uh, not only along the West Coast, but nationally, uh, trying to, uh, to recruit officers, uh, here of, of, all different types. I mean, right now, uh, uh, trying to find qualified applicants to be a police officer is tough, uh, let alone, uh, applicants, uh, that are a minority. And so we're trying a, a lot of, uh, uh, different things. We've, uh, gone, uh, to, uh, the local colleges, uh, all of those kinds of things. And so, um, really what we, what we are trying to do, as the chief, uh, talked about, is partner with, um, with youth, um, at a much younger age to get them to look at law enforcement as an option in their career. So we've expanded our cadet program, uh, we've expanded our CSO program. A number of our CSOs have become, uh, police officers. And so we're trying to build, um, from the ground up, uh, more officers, uh, within so that we get to know them, they get to know us, um, and that, uh, we have that relationship. So we continue to work on those things. But again, um, you know, you can't just turn twenty-one and decide, I think I'll be a police officer. And you've already, uh, made some bad choices in your life and some things like that. This needs to be a well-thought-out plan and, and you need to start thinking about that when you're, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, um, before you, uh, make some choices that you can't recover from.
SROs play a role in. SROs play a role in that kind of recruitment effort?
They do. And we've had some programs where we've had summer interns and the SROs have helped choose who our our summer interns are, and some of those things, those were grant-funded. And so that program has gone away to funds have been placed in different areas. And so, but we continue, you know, the the SROs, a lot of them are are cadet advisors. So they help recruit some of the kids from high school into being part of that program. Our cadet program is is a great program where kids from the age fourteen all the way up to twenty-one can be a cadet, and so they're they're exposed to law enforcement. They're exposed to decision-making. They're exposed to a lot of different things. So even if a young person decides that law enforcement is not the career for them, really, that 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 learning experience would benefit them no matter what career path they choose. They'll they'll be more civic-minded. They'll be better informed about what's going on in the community and and, you know, just a cadet program helps instill confidence in our kids as they become part of a team and and those kinds of things. So it's really, really good program. Unfortunately, not very active right now because of COVID. It will return.
Thank you. To to follow up actually on on your comment about cadet recruitment, especially to have youth involvement. Do you have a breakdown like that showcases? I don't know if you collect that information in the first place, like the demographics of the cadet participants.
Sure, we could get that to you. I don't have that right off the top of my head, but that's absolutely something we can get out to you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this question would be more towards chief or maybe just more of a general question to whoever it needs to go to. We we sort of have talked off and on about like a cahoots model that focuses more on on mental health and especially when it comes to outreach towards people who are undergoing a crisis. So is there any discussion or possibility of actually implementing that kind of model within the city within the next year?
Well, I know we've had some discussions with United Way, who is doing what they can to, I guess it would be a fledgling cahoots-type model. I will tell you that what the issue we have discussed with United Way was that it's it's not the the full meal deal. It's a great effort on their part. It's a van with a, I think, believe it was a paramedic and a or an EMT and a behavioral health specialist. But they will probably run into with just that model, the same problem that our police and fire folks run into, and that is where can we take someone or what will we do with someone if they are in need of service? It doesn't improve necessarily the number of social service or health organizations that might be able to assist someone. And if you look at cahoots, they have a detox center. They have a sobering sobering center, the detox services, and a medical clinic and some housing, as I understand it. But right now, I don't think that is in the plans, and it may be cost. I think the folks that we've spoken with from United Way are great people with great ideas that I would love to see be supported by this community.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things to kind of follow up. One on what Counselor Young was just asking about, and one of the things, Chief, that I have been interested in exploring more about the possibility of a cahoots model is where does it fit in the continuum of services that we have? We have a behavioral health unit. We have law enforcement-assisted diversion. We have alluvium. We have a number of different things that kind of all kind of run up towards the same kind of programs. I'm just wondering, you know, what makes sense in order in terms of filling the gap, but yet not having duplicative services because we're certainly not in a position to do that? And is this sort of hodgepodge that I see, and I please don't take that as a criticism, it's just a fact, that would sort of hodgepodge approach that we've had, is that is that working or do we need to kind of do a reset and say, okay, what's the best way to use our community's resources in a continuum of care? That, you know, so you have police on one end and then you have all the services in between. What do you, I don't know, what do you think about that? And then I have another follow-up.
Hi, it's Skip Miller again. Counselor, those are all very good questions and things that we talk about all the time. Some of this is going to go back to, I think, what Counselor Anderson was asking a little bit. If if we had a full operating cahoots model in Salem, I will tell you that the police department would be the first ones to get behind it and 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 celebrate it. I think that the issues like the chief talked about, though, is without having a sobering station, without having more without having a clinic, without having more shelters, without having other resources that Salem currently does not have. What would end up happening is that the people that would respond for the model that the United Way is proposing, well, good intended, is not going to have a place where they can take these people to get them help. A fully operating cahoots model in Eugene, as just an example. I think that last year they responded to around eighteen thousand calls throughout that year, which took about five to eight percent of calls away from the Eugene Police Department. So if it did anything close to the same for us, all of those would be pluses and wins. But more specifically to what you were going to, and again, kind of tying into what Counselor Anderson was talking about, what it does for the police department is exactly what people are saying. It removes us from things that really do not have a criminal nexus, that are that are people suffering from mental health or emotional disturbances or shelters of being unhomeless. Having a cahoots model that can go and provide medical care to the people that are in distress, having a place to get them out of the weather and to get them to the resources they need, to get them into a sobering station or a detox center where maybe they can make the best choices they've been able to make in months increases the chance of them being able to do better. So we do have a lot of those things that, as you said, they kind of piece together, but what we continue to miss are those big resources that can make those final changes.
I would like to challenge your language a little bit, Deputy Chief, and and it's it's just a way to kind of reframe this thing. Because I've been hearing, and in fact, in fact, I think a lot of my colleagues have been under the impression that that the police department isn't supportive of cahoots. And I think it's because of the language that you use, because every time we talk about it, you guys say, you tell us the reasons it won't work. We don't have this. We don't have this. We don't have this. I get it. But instead of saying it that way, how about you say, we we would like a cahoots, and here's what we need to do to make it successful. We have to have a sobering center. We have to have a clinic, and we have to, whatever the things are, list them out. And so this is the plan to go there, not this is why it won't work. So quit talking about why it won't work and tell us what we need to do as a community and as a council in order for that to be successful, because that's what we're trying to figure out tonight. Is, okay, what can we do? I mean, you know, we hear all these crazy terms like defund the police. Nobody wants to do that, but we wanted, we want to be smart. We want you guys to be doing police work, and we want mental health professionals to be doing mental health, mental health work. And what we need is a roadmap to get us there, and we need you to help paint that roadmap for us. So I just I toss that out there because I it's, and I'm sorry that you're the one on the receiving end of that, because but I've heard it a lot over the past few months. And I really want to get to an action place, not to an inaction place. And we need to be talking about, okay, so what needs to happen for it to happen? So that's my first thing. And the second thing is similar, and it goes to Deputy Chief Belshaw with his comment he made a little bit ago. And it's on recruitment. And I really want to encourage you as a department to not be passive about waiting to see who applies and then hiring those best folks. We in the twenty, in the in twenty twenty, I think most police agencies, and maybe you have, I don't know. Most police agencies are rethinking the things that the barriers that were in place when you and I were hired. You know, if I was held accountable or not hired in my into my career for things that I did when I was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old, you know, you talked about a fatal decision. Well, you know, sometimes we make bad choices when we're young. Sometimes we make bad choices when we're old. But sometimes we do it when we're young and we learn. And, you know, I mean, I know in in my agency where before I retired, we we used to have a, you know, if you've ever, if you've ever done this drug, you will not be considered for employment. If you've ever done this, ever. And so what we were doing is, we were not hiring the people who were honest with us about past choices. And we were hiring people who were willing to be deceit deceitful about the things that they did in their past or the things that we could figure out. So I would encourage you to really rethink some of those fatal errors that are keeping folks from our our workforce, because we, it is, I got to tell you, I think of all the things that we're going to be talking about over the next few months, having a a police force that is reflective of our community is possibly the most important thing that we can do. And it's I I just think that that's really where we need to focus a lot of our energy and not be passive about it, but actually be quite assertive in reaching out to those communities and working with folks, people that you, in the past, you would think, no, I want I want somebody either, you know, you know, the model, but I mean, but rethinking those old choices, you know, not looking for people that are straight out of the military, you know, maybe looking for, I don't know, second career people. There are a lot of people that can be quite valuable in a in a diverse workforce in a police department that I think that traditionally departments have overlooked, and I would really encourage you to rethink that.
That's a point well taken. We have re-reviewed our requirements and our disqualifiers. And so we've taken that more active role of even the ones that have made some questionable choices is staying in touch with them and saying, this happened too quickly or too soon. Not enough time has passed, but we we want to work with you and can we get you in another position to get you to that point where we can put you in a position where you can carry a gun? Because that there's a lot of trust put in people that are carrying guns, and so we need to make sure that they qualify there. But yeah, it's, we really do need to relook at those things, and we've started down that road.
Counselor Hoy, this is the chief. I think for several years, we've talked about how long are we going to hold something over somebody's head that happened many, many years ago? And I think that's exactly in line with what you're talking about. And I think we've done what we can to have a more real-world approach to recruiting. Even even as far as marijuana, where marijuana, I'm sure in your agency and many others, was a disqualifier, and now, quite frankly, it's legal, and we have college kids that are good kids that five months ago, when they were in college, they did something and they and they've realized they want to make a change. So I I want to assure you that I think we've certainly recognized what real world is all about.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Counselor Kizer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, I just echo all of Counselor Hoy's comments and regarding both for a cahoots-type model to work, what what are the things that we need for it to be successful? Because I have heard that also over the last, since I've been on council, is it's not going to work because of X, Y, and Z, but we need to know how will it work? Please tell us those things. And I also understand that our police department might not have all those answers. That it's going to be a partnership of, I don't know, several different kind of organizations and professions to come together and identify those things specifically. And then as far as recruitment goes, I I wholeheartedly agree, and I'm not in the law enforcement profession like Counselor Hoy was. But I do understand that sometimes people come from very different types of disciplines than you might expect. So I'm I'm in the field of IT, for example, but I have hired people who have degrees from all across the board. It's just that they're personally interested in technology and they get involved, maybe in their twenties or even thirties, and they do a career change. So I would think that it's it might be similar in other professions as well like that. So I guess the challenge would be to go out and find, you know, I was a history major. You know, maybe people in liberal arts are kind of interested. I don't know, but expanding kind of that, your your pool of who you think would be interested beyond the the historical interest in that, I think, would be important. I was curious as to a lot of the complaints that I get from the public about especially folks who are are homeless are along the lines of I see so-and-so in front of my building every day. And every day, they urinate, defecate, throw up, do something that then I have to deal with as a resident or as a building owner or as a business owner. And what are you going to do about it? And I think it might be really helpful just to publicly talk about what your options are when somebody calls the police to report something like that, because my my kind of go-to response is unless there's a crime occurring, that there's not a whole lot that the police can do. And and a lot of this is wrapped up into somebody's mental health. Either they're going, they had, they're in a crisis-type situation or they're they're not taking medication or whatever it is, but those are the calls I get on a nearly daily basis, as I'm sure you are. Can you perhaps just walk us through a kind of a typical, maybe a typical response? If somebody calls, what what happens? What what an officer does or or doesn't do? I think that might be helpful for for folks to know.
Counselor Skip Miller again. So basically, on a on a regular call, sort of like what you're saying, somebody's in front of their their building. The first thing we would try to figure out is if they they have the ability to trespass them in a normal world. And I say that because we'll talk about the COVID world, right, in a little bit. So in a normal world, we would want to find out if they're going to want to trespass the person. If they aren't going to want to trespass the person, then right off the bat, police responding is is already at a at a disadvantage because we're just going to have to talk to them, and we do that all the time. We actually try to talk and we we try to, sorry, make sure this is still up, okay? We try to actually get them to move along and have them leave the area, and usually we've been very successful with that. If they do want somebody trespassed, then we can give them a citation. If it's private property, not for being on city property. If it's private property, we give them a citation. And if they still refuse to leave, then we could take them to jail in the past. They're not going to stay there, but we could still remove them from the area, which in the end is really what the business owner probably wants is to to have this person leave the area. As I say, in the normal world, that's what we would be able to do. In a COVID world, the jail is unable to take anybody for a trespass. So we don't have the ability to even do that. So we're left trying to continue to to see if we can get them into resources. We work very well hand-in-hand with arches, see if we can get somebody to come up there and then help them move along or get them something plugged in so that they want to leave. Oftentimes, we'll go get people a sleeping bag. If we can get you a sleeping bag, will you go? So we're, again, put in the position of trying to solve something that is not a criminal nexus, but certainly is causing concern for our community. And we do not want to actually give a citation to somebody who does not have the ability to actually pay for it. So we try to negotiate our way out of this as much as as not. And again, always keep in mind that these things from a police perspective, not a humanistic standpoint, but from a police perspective, are very low governmental interest. So the worst thing that can happen for us is we go there trying to negotiate with somebody. And because of the the emotionally disturbed person or because of the the stress that they're in or any other thing, if it becomes violent and we have to take action, that's the last people that we actually want to have to take any kind of force with. So oftentimes, anymore in today's day, we will try to go talk to them, but if if there isn't even that ability to start the transaction from do we have any legal means to make this person leave or to make them move? We actually are being very, very selective on what we're even able to respond to, because a lot of these actions and more so since COVID, everybody's on edge, specifically over the last several months of protests. um, and more so since COVID, everybody's on edge, specifically over the last several months of protests. That the community has learned that we do not have a lot of ability to take them and move them and get them to leave if they don't wanna leave on their own. Um, and so a lot of these things are, are, and it ended up escalating, which is the exact opposite of what we want.
So Counselor, this George Burke, can I jump in here really quick? So I, I think, and to follow up on, uh, Counselor Hoy and something that he brought up, uh, in his, in the last part of the conversation, I think it's some of, I, I understand what you're asking a little bit more is, who can we have do this other than police? And I think that's really the bigger question, rather than saying, looking at other options, I think there are programs out there, uh, whether it's, whether it's something that's, and however it were to be funded, where we had people, uh, who were hired to actually respond, who would be cleaners. Uh, so we have people that, that, that's what their function is, is to, is to respond to these calls rather than to call police to deal with the issue. Maybe there's a way that we can involve, uh, people who, that's what we hire them to do. And, and there's all kinds of ways of making that happen and, and funding streams that can make that happen. Um, but it kinda goes hand in hand with not only having a cleaning program, but having a security program. And obviously we work down, we work closely with the downtown folks, but then having cleaners that would be able to come in behind that um, and be able to deal with some of that problem then gives, I think, some of our business owners an option outside of just calling police.
Uh, Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just wanna say Deputy Chief Burke, I think you have placed your finger on the issue we're here to talk about. Not just in what Counselor Casey was talking about, but with Counselor Nordike and Counselor Hoy, Counselor Young, myself have been talking about is, who can we have do this job other than the police? And that's to me is kind of the lens we should look at it. I wanna say first of all to the chief and the deputies who are here, you folks and all your officers have a very, very hard, difficult job. And I wanna commend you for your professionalism and the good work you do for our city. Following up with Counselor Hoy, we want to help you. And, and you know, there is to continue, and to continue what we're doing to the misguided calls to defund the police. But there has to be some sort of movement, I would say, and we're here to try to help you. So, you know, who can we have do this other than the police? And I agree completely with Counselor Hoy. We need to hear from you, how we as the city government can help you as opposed to here's why we can't do some things we suggested. Finally, I have to tell you that, um, I came out to Eugene in nineteen seventy-three to go to law school and it took me to two thousand and six to realize that Salem is the place to be. But I'm very familiar with Whitebird. And, you know, there's a longer history of, of Whitebird in Eugene and how it evolved into cahoots and everything else. So we're behind the eight ball on that, but I hope we can start it. My final, uh, comment, uh, Mr. Mayor is, uh, uh, I really am interested in the behavioral health unit. I think that is something that can be expanded. And I'm looking at your budget spreadsheet and I see you've got the behavioral health team and the police, uh, problem-oriented police team. And those two things, uh, units seem to be kind of in the same area. And I'll have to tell you, the pop team dealt very, very well with the problem in Ward one, or what, excuse me, Ward two in my ward that related to some of these drugs and other issues, and I thank you for that. But I see that behavioral to health team has gone up about, uh, ninety, excuse me, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but the pop team has gone down two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I wonder how that happened in, in the current budgets, because it sure seems to me that, that both those teams ought to be supported and encouraged. And I'm looking to you as the, uh, police leaders to tell us, here's a way we can deal with these problems. It doesn't always relate to having an officer discuss. So again, thank you for the terrific work you've been doing and I look forward to even better work in the future.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. So I feel like we're starting to drill down to some of the issues that we see in common here. Uh, one of the things that I would remind folks, if you were unable to attend the presentation that Cahoots put on last year, almost a year ago now, they pointed out the fact that, um, a lot of what they do does not necessarily entail police work. In fact, it's not criminal in nature. A lot of what they do is about simply medical. Because remember, cahoots is half mental health and it's half medical. They have a paramedic and a mental health professional or an EMT. Because a lot of times persons on the street don't have access to a bathroom. They don't have access to a primary care physician. So a lot of times their options here are the ER or nothing. And that is an extreme, an extreme choice and a very expensive choice. So one of the things that Cahoots does to save the city of Eugene a lot of money is that they do onsite wound care. They can assist with medication management. They can do other things on the street in their medically equipped van that saves a patrol deputy from Salem PD or saves a firefighter from taking someone to the ER. If you have the right kind of equipment on hand. And that's one of the things that they do that right now wouldn't necessarily be a good fit for law enforcement. The other thing that I keep hearing over and over again as a stumbling block or an obstacle is, well, we don't have a sobering center. We don't have a detox center, so we don't have a place to take people to. And there's two, two problems I have with that. One, it assumes that someone has to go somewhere to solve the problem. When, as we've discussed, de-escalation oftentimes is, is what's needed. We just need someone who knows how to talk to a person, who oftentimes does systems trauma, who has been traumatized from past interactions with people before, and may be a little bit skittish about a person in a sworn uniform with a badge and a gun. And again, that has nothing to do with taking someone anywhere, much less a sobering or detox center. The other assumption that's baked into this is that the person needs sobering or detoxification. And I think we have to be careful about the fact that we should never assume that all homeless are criminals, that all homeless are drunks, that all homeless are lazy people who can work, that all homeless are people who choose to be homeless and so on. We have to be very careful about the assumptions that we make when we talk about the unsheltered. And when I look at the data from Cahoots, uh, the, the common calls that they would see over and over again, alcohol was only about fifteen percent of the total calls they received. The other calls they received had to do with calls for counseling, calls for treating anxiety and depression, uh, calls relating to food and water, calls relating to domestic violence or family issues. So clearly, would it be nice to have a detox and a sobering center in Salem? Absolutely it would. And I wasn't on council when, when that happened, but I would certainly like to know one day why we don't, why that fell through. But let's not assume that that is the only reason why we can't have, uh, a cahoots model. What I think I would love to hear more from are our community partners, because the community partners that I know would be more than happy to be a destination for persons who need help. We do have partners in the community that can assess with sexual assault support. We do have partners in the community that can assess with needle exchange and harm reduction, housing assistance, uh, domestic violence and family violence. I mean, let's, I just wanna make sure that when people say, well, no sobering center, no cahoots, that's not what the data shows. And so I think when we continue this conversation, what I would love to do is to hear from the social service partners who work with our homeless population every single day. Who can tell you firsthand where cahoots fills in the gaps as well? I feel that tonight we've received a great amount of information that's been extremely helpful to me in understanding how much our, uh, what our police department does in interact, interacting with persons who are unsheltered. But that's just one piece of the puzzle. And so I look forward to getting that data. Um, I do have a couple more questions. Uh, and we've talked about a wide variety of topics. This has been a very helpful session. Um, one, in the presentation at the top of our program, we talked about the number of EDP calls or emotionally disturbed calls that we receive each year. And I believe the presentation said you guys get about five thousand calls or so a year. Is that the same thing as a mental health call? Or do you guys treat those as two separate things? I'm just trying to get the lay of the land and understanding how many mental health-related calls does the Salem Police Department respond to each year?
Uh, Counselor is exactly the same. It's just a different, it's a different name. Uh, some, uh, parts of our community felt calling a call, a mental call, um, uh, wasn't the proper way to do it. So uh, we just simply changed the terminology to emotionally, emotionally disturbed person and it fits a variety of things, but same thing.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. I appreciate that. Um, the next question I had was, um, you know, a lot of my peers have already hit on the topic of recruitment and I concur with their assessment. And hey, I'm not a professional recruiter, so far be it for me to make suggestions along those roads. I do appreciate the fact that the Salem Police Department already does outreach to the NAACP. I think that's really, I think you guys should be commended for that outreach that is needed. I'm wondering what other outreach do you do to organizations of color in our community? Who might be not only a great place to build, uh, deeper connections, uh, but also for potential recruiting purposes? Are there any Latinx groups, for example, that Salem PD currently does outreach to?
So we, uh, we have a number of outreach, uh, areas that we, um, deal with in the community. So we have, uh, we have been partners with the Salem Coalition of pastors, uh, in, in the past, um, in reaching out and working with them. We have had our Platicus Compolis, Policia with, um, with, uh, Spanish language officers that are bilingual going and reaching out to the, to the Hispanic community. Um, and so we have a, a number of those programs and even things as simple as, uh, coffee with the cop. I mean, for a young person that, um, who wants to ask a police officer question about what's it take to become a police officer? Um, some of those, just those simple conversations are really, uh, positive interactions for us in the community. So we continue to, uh, to work. Uh, you all know, uh, Angie and Angie has been, uh, our social media person. Um, she, she gets us out there on Instagram and Twitter and Facebook and all of those different things. Um, a, and so we, we really are trying to tap into the pulse of the community, um, and the minority community and, and and looking for different ways. Um, and so, you know, things like radio, which people a lot of times, um, downplay, but a, again, for our Hispanic community, that's one of their main forms of communication. They don't all necessarily have smartphones or they're not necessarily on social media, but they do uh, tune into the radio to get their news and to get, uh, community updates and things like that. So um, we're really trying some of those different things, um, and trying different ways, uh, to just see what we can, what we can find out about the community. And then, um, we work on, um, if you ask us, we'll come. We, we try and come to different events. We try and get our, ourself, our presence out there. Um, and so you'll see the downtown guys at different events. You see them, uh, at, uh, uh, events across the city. Um, and so all of those different things, um, uh, just uh, interacting with the community. And it's just, that's how you build the trust first, um, building those relationships and then we'll work on um, what the next steps are.
And if I could, um, this has been important to me for years and I have not been as suc, as successful as I would have liked. Uh, and reaching out to the NAACP has been great, but quite frankly, it has not provided the results that we would want. So, and earlier in my presentation, I said it takes a community. This is on us, but we are always willing to listen to ideas that anyone in our community might have that could provide, uh, hey, have you thought of going here? Have you thought of going here? I stopped putting the onus on you. It's, the onus is on us. But as a community, if we're trying to diversify our police force, uh, any thoughts or any ideas or any suggestions, uh, we would certainly be open to.
Sir Naki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and just to kinda wrap on that piece, as far as it does take a community and going back to Counselor Nordike's comment regarding the sobering center, um, there, every single counselor was in support of that and staff was in support of it. But it was a community partnership that had to happen to make that come into existence. And we had every piece out there from our end and it, and it was those other partners who did not come through with their end. And so I would suggest that, uh, that report is forwarded to you so you can actually see what the results of that were, because it, it, it was truly heartbreaking to a lot of us. We spent a lot of time trying to put that location in place and we have the location now. We, we just can't, uh, uh, afford to run it as it was originally intended. So it's, yeah, I, it'd be nice to go after that one again here, but, uh, it may take some different bodies and different offices throughout many different organizations. So.
No, I, I'm hearing a couple of, uh, themes that I, I'm hoping, uh, you all will come back to us again. We can have a further discussion. And, uh, the one that, that really is catching my attention, uh, is, uh, this discussion of a cahoots-like model. And understanding, uh, I think the way, uh, Counselor Hoy framed it is, is correct, is what do we need to do to make it happen? Uh, rather than, uh, sort of we each talk about it, uh, kind of in different ways. It, it's really a kind, almost a flow chart that just says, look, here's the kind of things you need to have in place to move this forward. We have this, 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 and this, but we're missing this and this, which allows policymakers, uh, whether at our level, county, state or federal level, that we can, we can take these pieces around and shop them and, and see what we can pull together. And I would hope we could get to this within the next, uh, year, year or two. I, I really think uh, we should be able to figure this one out. I, I think we know what's missing. Uh, or we know what our model might look like that's slightly different from Eugene's, but I, I'd really like to see uh, something like that pulled together. I think that would really help us out. Uh, so we don't have these kind of, uh, somewhat, for me anyway, a disjointed conversation about this. What works, what doesn't, what's here, what's there? Is it where we take them or is it the personnel involved? You know, who's doing what to whom? Who's out there as a resource? Who isn't? Uh, the other I think, uh, that, uh, also caught my attention is the, um, the outreach for employees, not the outreach for information so much as what does a targeted outreach program to recruit employees into our police department look like? Uh, and I understand the relationship building is, is really good. But who are the relationships with that also produce that eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, or thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, whatever the age groups are that produces those people who will make application and become successful police officers? And the only way I've ever seen that kind of recruitment work is it is absolutely targeted. You absolutely go into the schools or into the colleges and you look for those kids and you talk to them directly and pull them in. And I'm, I'm just trying to understand if there is a, a better model than just, uh, being open to hiring. That's been kind of the tradition here. I, I mean, I've listened to this for over twenty years and, and Chief, I'm, I, I know you've, you've heard it even longer, discussing this issue of lack of diversity in our police department or at least a, uh, a police department that reflects our community. We're not alone. We've got an education system that also does not reflect our community. Our teachers don't reflect our community. Uh, our community's demographic makeup, their, their administrative staff doesn't look anything like our uh, community's demographics. I mean, you can go down this through a lot of institutions here, but I think, I, I'd really like to see if there is a strategy or a model that would allow us to move forward on this that would, that, that makes sense to you guys that can fit your ability to, uh, to recruit. Right? Those are the two things that, that really caught my attention tonight. Those are the two things that really caught my attention tonight.
Mr. Mayor? If I may just add on, exactly, I heard the same two things. And just to second what you were saying, is a little bit of the transparency, accountability part, like you're saying, what are the actual steps that we've taken? And what has they produced? The chief mentioned they've reached out to the NAACP, but that it hasn't produced a lot of results. Are there other organizations that we should be, that we aren't, having a relationship with and that sort of thing? Where are the actual, what are the actual actions we take during this year's recruitment to make a difference? So that we can look at that. And, you know, you mentioned, Chief, that you welcome all ideas, but if folks don't know what you're doing, it's hard to provide additional ideas. And I guess to your other points, Mr. Mayor, and also to second what Vanessa was saying at the end there, Counselor Nordike was about the cahoots model that there is more than just taking people to a place. And I think I would really like to hear how we could take steps to turn maybe some of our existing programs that we talked about behavioral health and problem-oriented policing into a model that actually helps de-escalate in the moment at the place and allows the person to go back home to their family or go back to wherever they're having to sleep that night or whatever the situation may be, and not be entirely dependent upon a building. But if there are things like that, like the sort of mobile medical center that we need, then we need to know about that so we can try to address that. If we absolutely have to have a building, what are the bare minimums we need to help get to that point? So that, as several people have mentioned, so that the policymakers can drive that policy home? So we get progress as opposed to, you know, defeatism of it's too hard. So I appreciate everyone's comments on those two things.
Mayor, if I could, I just want to let everyone, I don't want anyone to think from any of our comments today that we don't de-escalate and trying to do some of the things Counselor Osik was just saying every single day. There is not, there are very few people going to jail. There are people that were trying to get into treatment every single day. They are trying, people were trying to provide sleeping bags or whatever they may need every single day. So I don't want anyone to leave this meeting not knowing that our officers do everything they can to try and help people. Because quite honestly, there are no resources for us to turn to. And those that exist, we certainly try and get them into those. But I just want to make sure everybody understands. And this isn't, I'm not trying to defend or anything. I'm just trying to say the facts. I know Counselor Kazer has seen us in action because a lot of it happens in her wards. We're doing everything we can to de-escalate and not create any issues for the people, but it is a difficult task.
Well, and I apologize if I was unclear. I didn't mean that the police weren't doing that, but that rather, this is one of those things we want to take off their police plate because it's not a police matter, it's not a law enforcement matter. And so those are the kind of things where being able to identify them, and this is a, you know, 7% workload that we could take off of the police plate and put on some other avenue.
Counselor Osik, thank you. And I wasn't suggesting that you thought that, but a lot of the comments have been that way. And we would certainly welcome a 7% reduction in dealing with it. If there was resources available, whether it's a cahoots model, if we haven't been clear, we would love to have something like cahoots.
You have been clear, Chief. And I think that's, it seems like now it's just such an opportune time to move forward on this. The other is, Chief, on the question of de-escalation and arrests and all the rest of it. If my email is any indication, the more common complaint is people are not being arrested and hauled off to jail somehow from the person's perspective who saw the person urinate against the wall or defecate or people get into an argument or a fight. And I've seen de-escalation described in so many different ways. I think you guys owe you a tremendous gratitude for the amount of de-escalation. And the county owes you tremendous gratitude for not trying to fill their jail on a daily basis with the people you could be taking over there.
Well, they wouldn't let us, even if we tried.
Sheriff, I'm sure is thrilled with the work you're doing.
Right. And you make a really good point. Certainly, it's frustrating for people to call us because it appears we're doing nothing. And that's frustrating for a community. It's frustrating for businesses. It's frustrating for people that are just in the community and things are happening. But this is a community issue. It's not a police issue. I think Deputy Chief Miller said it very well. A lot of this isn't criminal. It's social. And as a community, we have to figure out a way to deal with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm thinking about a conversation we had earlier today, where we went through this discussion with others. Anyone else? But what would be, Mr. Powers, what would be the kind of timeline? I think Counselor Nordike said it for me the most directly is, what's the timeline on this? What could we expect in terms of some, at least advisory deliverables? Things we can work with in our strategic planning or for you in your early budgeting that we can begin getting a handle on? When would this be in effect? If we can get to, pardon me, to a cahoots model or some other model? What's the timeline like?
Well, tonight's.
What's your timeline like?
Tonight's discussion was helpful. I heard several outcomes, at least two outcomes, that counsel desires. One is to have a non-police response to certain needs in the community.
I think it's describing a response that offers the array and how are we doing on that? What do we have that allows us to have the non-police response in the appropriate moment? Does that make sense, or am I just missing it?
Well, no, that makes sense. That's a broader outcome desired by counsel than just having the police not have to respond. So I think our follow-up as staff is, okay, what are the existing responses from social service providers? There is outreach into homeless, into communities of unsheltered individuals. What is the advantages to the city and to the community of looking at alternatives? There was a question asked, I believe, earlier regarding the behavioral health unit. Is it more advantageous to look at expanding that unit? Or is it more advantageous to look at other ways of addressing residents who are in behavioral health crisis? I heard loud and clear, you know, the need for a roadmap, and I think that will be fairly easy to put together. The United Way has done some really good work on that for Salem. A challenging piece. So I do really appreciate the comments regarding that you made, Mayor, and I believe the council president made regarding. Now, this isn't necessarily just limited to the city and the city's consideration because this will require a funding, funding in areas that we, the city, have not traditionally been involved with. So I think we can put together that roadmap fairly soon and to have it in time for your discussions with the strategic plan and the budget development. We will be coming back to the Budget Committee in January. So I could see certainly a follow-up to this conversation, really on both of the two items that were summarized, the non-police response and then the targeted personnel recruitment. I could see both of those being as follow-up to tonight in your hands, certainly before January.
That would be really helpful. The legislature starts to meet in January, and I'm sure, as we talked about it, I mean, I could hear state responsibilities or at least a role for the state that we could present to the appropriate legislative committees describing the kinds of expectations or needs that we have in areas that are traditionally in their wheelhouse, not in ours. You know, that kind of, I think it'd be really helpful to have those kind of, the block that tells me what's missing. Then where could we, sort of where could we go looking for it? Counselor Hoy?
I was hoping for a timeline maybe closer to November before we go on our sort of holiday break that we end up with it about a month long, it seems like, in December. So we can be prepared for those conversations, like the mayor was saying, in January. So I think something more November would be better.
I think that'd be really helpful, Mr. Manager, if it's possible on that particular area. I think that'd be tremendously helpful. Again, it isn't going to be perfect, but it will give us where we've ended up kind of with roadblocks showing us where we can build some bridges. I mean, it's just trying to figure out how to get through this thing as rapidly as we can and who should be helping us with this thing. Because it's going to be expensive. There's no, at least that's my understanding of this kind of program. It's an expensive program, and we do not have solely the resources to fund a program like this and do it right. I guess we could do it not perfect, but we could do some of it. You know, it's that kind of thing. How do we do this thing? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This also dovetails with the police performance audit. I mean, but they work high and together, so they ought to be at least running on parallel tracks rather than one going and then the other going later.
Yeah, that's a good point. Counselor Kazer?
Thanks. I agree it would be best to have this roadmap completed within just a few weeks so that we can really start to put together a strategy for how to navigate that roadmap to go on the trip, I guess. I think it would be perhaps prudent to also be talking with our partners who pulled out of the Sobering Center and ask them why. There's probably some reason, and it's probably more than just money. But I would like to know.
It's money.
Well, beyond money, though, like, so it's money because it's not a priority, right? I mean, that's what it really comes down to. So, but I think we need to press them a little bit about why it's not. I think we need to hear that. I think the public needs to hear that from them specifically. Because, you know, our partners are great until they're not, I guess. And I think we do need to hold them to account a little bit because they're right in this with us. And for them to just say, "Hey, we're done." And I haven't heard either, have they even come back to the table to even talk about it? I don't know if we have, but there's certainly a need, and I'd like to know what happened there other than money. And if it's money, it's money, but it still comes down to values and priority, then I would guess.
Take some time and have some lunch and talk about it. Take it through, whatever. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you. Two things I just want to point out. I don't know what the status is of Senator Ron Wyden's Cahoots Act, but he introduced an act in the, you know, the United States Congress that would create more of a cahoots-type funding system nationwide. And it would grant states enhanced federal Medicaid funding for three years to provide a mobile crisis service. And it would also provide money towards planning grants to help states create or expand that system. I assume that we are tracking that. I have no idea what the status of that bill is, but it sure would be great.
It would.
To do something useful along those lines. And the only other thing I would add is, when I attended the cahoots presentation last year, what I remembered them saying was that it actually saved Eugene money because it's cheaper to dispatch a mental health professional and an EMT than a sworn police officer. Sworn police officers are very expensive because they are exceptionally trained and all the equipment, and so on, and so on. So the way they described it was that it's cheaper to deploy cahoots than it is to deploy officers for the appropriate calls. It's also cheaper because if you do onsite medical care instead of a trip to the ER, that saves a lot of money, too. So I'm sure the program costs money. But again, the way the cahoots personnel described it to the folks who were in attendance to that meeting was that there's actually net savings to the city of Eugene. So I'll look for.
That's the kind of thing we should find out, you know, if there really is. And are we in the right size and configuration? You know, do we have enough money to even save money being spent on police at this point? Which takes it to the audit and kind of discussing it in that line. I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, it dovetails nicely with the performance audit. That was the whole idea.
What else we got? All righty, then, we are adjourned.